Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the May 5th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. It's nice to hear voices in the background when we say the Pledge of Allegiance because we don't always have the privilege of some voices in the audience. Our first business is advertising our dog pound. Commissioner Kokoski has the dog today.
Alright, can you sit down? Can you sit? Can you sit? Sit down. Sit. Nope, he wants to stand, he's got a lot of energy probably from the car ride over here. This is our dog from our Lorraine County Dog Pound. You can't take him home today, you have to wait until Saturday, he'll be available then at 3 o'clock. We have lots of dogs to choose from, they usually give me the little ones, so must be running out of the little ones. So if you're interested in a pet, make the Lorraine County Dog Pound your first choice. Thanks.
We have very brief business that we will conduct before we go to the 9:45 appointment and topic of discussion for today. Do we have congratulations for...
We got...
Where is it?
Napkins up there. Oh, Lori should have this.
Okay, are you gonna read it then Lori?
Proclamation.
For Lorraine Medina CBCF.
I do, I do.
Alright.
The dog wore me out.
That's because you're so young, you get to do all those things today.
Okay. In the matter of recognizing and congratulating the Lorraine Medina Community-Based Correction Facility on being rated one of the top two CBCFs in the state of Ohio. Whereas the University of Cincinnati completed an evaluation of Ohio Halfway House Community-Based Correction Facilities dated March 2010. And whereas the study was a follow-up study to 2002 capturing data from 2006. The Lorraine Medina CBCF did not fare well in the earlier 2002 study. In the 2006 study, we were one of the top two CBCFs in the state of Ohio. Whereas the result of the CBCF study proves that the Lorraine County Court of Common Pleas, Lorraine County Adult Probation, and the remaining programs of the correctional community have a positive effect on recidivism. These numbers could not occur without everyone working together. And whereas the second news is that the Lorraine Medina CBCF was audited by the American Correctional Association on March 15th and 16th of 2010. They audited the last four years which entailed reviewing our policies, procedures, and support documentation. They also interviewed staff, contract employees, and residents. And whereas the Lorraine Medina CBCF received a 100% on the mandatory standards and a 98.5% on the 217 non-mandatory standards. They will now be credited for the next three years. Only two CBCFs received an A and they will look at our CBCF as a model for the state. And whereas the state comments that as stewards of public funds, we have to know that we are investing in Ohio's limited resource in programs that work. Community correction dollars must help to divert offenders from an already overcrowded prison system and to do so in a way that prepares them to live a law-abiding life. And whereas the state also says that the study completed by the University of Cincinnati validates many of the excellent community programs we knew we had in Ohio. We plan to study the programs that did well to allow us to replicate their best practices across the state. Now therefore be resolved by the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners that we hereby congratulate Mike Willetts and his entire staff at the Lorraine Medina Community-Based Correction Facility for a job well done. And hopefully Mike is here.
He's in the last row. Come on down, Mike.
That was long, but it's well worth mentioning what a good job that you guys have done over there over the last few years.
Oh, he's bringing somebody with him. I think that's a familiar face.
My board chair.
Oh, okay.
Omar.
I think we know him.
I think you might know him. I think he's related to somebody we know.
The bean counter. Did you wanna say something?
You wanna say a couple words?
I just wanna, I appreciate so much the Commissioners, the county backing our program up. I mean, we first started this back in 1997 and we house 60 males as well as 18 females out at our facility. We have a very good relationship with adult probation, with the Court of Common Pleas, and with the state. So we've made some dramatic inroads, we've improved. Again, as what was read, we were one of the only As, the remainders were Fs. So I mean, it kind of impressed me, but it shouldn't because I have an excellent staff who are improving every day out there. And our recidivism rate is of course what the state is targeting our dollars at. You know, if we keep people out of prison, that's where we get the money. But to keep them out of prison, we have to help rehabilitate them, to change their thinking, to do a lot of other work with them so that they don't go back into using drugs and alcohol, issues with their mental health, and also with employment. So we've had a positive effect on them and we're not seeing a lot of these people come back. And these are higher-risk individuals, these are the ones that have been through the court system several times, have numerous dockets, and then taxpayers' monies are expended quite a bit on them just going through that court system. So again, it's a working relationship. I think the correctional system of Lorraine County is alive and well and we're actually doing what we're supposed to be doing.
Thank you, Mike Willetts. And Bart, thank you.
Thank you, good job, very good job.
A thought for today attributed to George Burns says, "The secret of a good sermon is to have a good beginning and a good ending and to have the two as close together as possible." Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services, Ms.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
No investments, appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Travel.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Under the Airport Amendment Resolution 07607 adopted August 23rd, 2007, authorizing agreement with Johnson Aviation to manage airport facilities. Said amendment is to reflect a decrease of $833.33 for the monthly fee paid by Johnson from $10,950 per month to $10,116.67 per month effective May 1st, 2010.
Do we have a comment on this?
This is just all of our cost-reduction strategy that we deployed a couple weeks ago, this is just one of the housekeeping pieces.
Good.
About an 8% decrease, second.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction Lorraine County Commissioners.
I assume we'll have an executive session.
I do want to talk to the Board about our ongoing labor negotiations. I do not have any, I don't think I have any potential new hires to discuss today, so it should be pretty brief. That topic's allowable under the Sunshine Law for Executive Sessions, so I request that we go into Executive Session at the conclusion of our regular Board meeting today to talk about that. Thank you.
Approve an internist stop-loss contract with Medical Mutual of Ohio effective retroactive January 1st, 2010 through December 31st, 2010.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any way that you guys would mind just holding that off for another week? I didn't really get a chance to research that very well before we make a decision. I don't think we've discussed it much either, have we?
Yes ma'am, we have. This is just, the contract, we agreed to the various elements of the healthcare back in December, but because of the contract with regard to certain pieces that the prosecutors usually change and their attorneys change, so we adopted the proposals with the contracts to follow. The contract is now to form, I guess that's what the Prosecutor's Office calls it, to form correctly, but the essence of the agreement was decided back in December. So this is just a catch-up when we decided to change the stop-loss insurance levels.
And what exactly are the stop-loss levels at this point?
We decided to take on more of the risk to have more of the savings and we raised...
Oh.
Remember now? I just saw the light go off.
Yeah, I remember, I was not in favor of that. That's why.
Well, we took more risk to do the cost savings.
Right.
So we had more money, so that's...
You want me to just explain it real briefly?
Yes.
We did have a significantly lower stop-loss insurance. We discussed a couple things, one of those was possibly completely reassuring ourselves on the specific stop-loss while maintaining an aggregate stop-loss on a catastrophic level on multiple claims. That was, it was much more risk than we were ready to assume at the time, so we raised our specific stop-loss to $500,000 per enrollee with the anticipated cost savings of about $600,000, anywhere from $300,000 to $600,000 depending on the amount of shock claims, high-volume claims we have for the year. We trended the last five or six years of our shock claims and we were spending on average about $350,000 to $400,000 on those claims, but we were spending almost a million dollars on the reinsurance at the current levels of specific stop-loss that we had. We did maintain a 125% aggregate in case there was, you know, pandemic outbreak or something like that, so that does limit our exposure to a point. We also decided at that point that we would, that rate would be built in for the old insurance rate into what we charged for insurance and then we would start moving some of that funds towards our own reinsurance fund, which we will do later in the year. Right now, it's too premature to see how many shock claims we may have this year. I'll know better around June or July when we start seeing the high-volume claims, how many we may have this year, but we'll definitely take a look at what our savings was. The good thing about the specific stop-loss, we could actually go back and reinstitute a lower specifically, we wanted to pay for it, we're not comfortable with it. And at the same time we did that decision, remember, we decided to go retrospective on our workers' comp, which is just a hair shy of being self-insured in workers' comp and I'm getting ready to work on that a lot this summer because you have to make the decision late a year, so our self-insured retrospective look at our workers' comp will begin for next year. So we have to put some mechanisms in place about how we're gonna deal with that, segregate that money out so that we can adequately reinsure us. The difference between completely self-insured and retrospective workers' comp is that you have a 10-year window on the retrospective. Some of the positive things is that if it doesn't work out at the end of the 10 years, hopefully you've put enough money aside for your claims that may still be lingering out there for your reserves. If it's managed right, you will have, if it's not, you won't. Also, if it's going very well, anytime during the retrospective period you can slip into fully self-insured and save additional funds if things are going positive. So those are a couple of the...
Kind of intertwining Medical Mutual and Workman's Comp together.
Yeah, you know...
They're two separate things.
They are two separate things, I was just going over our insurances, which is sorry. The...
Basically, we went through the actuarial reports and we were able to find a cost savings, hopefully if everything stays trending the same.
Correct.
But our risk is higher.
Our risk is higher, but it's a calculated risk through the actuarial procedure.
Remembering that we're self-insured.
Right.
Okay, now, do you want more information, Lori?
Well, I thought we had something from the Prosecutor's Office, did we not? Some opinion, and that was just for form, it was not anything other than approval as to form type of opinion?
No, there were a few changes that they agreed to make and after we approved this, this has to go back to Mr. Flanagan to make sure that those changes comport with what requested, but I understand they agreed to everything that we asked to be changed.
The, I think we're going back a little further on some of the work, we worked with the prosecutors on movement of funds to establish different line items so that we could put money aside for the insurance, but we had a little bit of a go-around with that and I believe that we resolved that last year.
Did we not at one point talk about maybe going out for RFPs for our medical coverage since, I mean, since Ted and I've been Commissioners, it's just been Medical Mutual, there's never been anybody...
We did the RFP process two years ago, didn't we?
We did.
Anthem and United and Medical Mutual, right?
We did it last year.
We did?
Was it last year? Okay, I thought a couple years ago.
And we went through the whole process, all the RFPs, all the companies.
Where was I?
We got the recommendation letters.
You were sick for about five months, remember?
You were using the medical care.
You were using the medical care at the time you were doing it.
You were a user. August, yeah.
August, you got sick.
The whole...
A lot of that process was done.
All the RFPs...
I'm not on all that fun, huh?
All the RFPs were done, we had three different potential TPAs vie for our business. We received the letters required under the Ohio Revised Code from our folks that work with us as to what was in the best interest of the county plan and then the Board awarded the proposal to MMO again for another term.
Do you know when that was? Can we just hold this for one week?
Doesn't matter to me, we hold it this long.
Doesn't matter one more week?
No, I mean, the one thing I will say is that we've agreed to this, this is what we're operating under right now.
Yeah, we agreed to this back in November, December to do this.
Correct.
Okay.
So, would you mind going?
Yeah, I would just say let's move forward, you get more information, but we did agree to this, you may not have been here at the time.
I wasn't.
So...
Okay.
I'll withdraw my motion. Thank you.
Oh, second. Drew your motion, Drew.
She wants to wait a week.
Oh, okay, alright then.
Alright, so we'll just hold it till next week.
Thank you.
Approve customized training program through the college, NORD, Advance, and Engineering Technologies for two hours forklift recertification training and four hours forklift and certification training for up to 16 employees.
Ah, so moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Under Job and Family, enter into plan for expenditure funds allocated by the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services for state fiscal year 10. Lorraine County received $342,777 and shall be expended as $75,000 for income maintenance, $75,000 for adult protective services, and $192,777 for child support.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Under the Engineer, approve a transfer of a server hosting tax map files and two seats of Autodesk, AutoCAD 2010, and raster design 2010 for purpose of increasing offices' ability to provide quality services to the public. These items were purchased by Tax Map through the Engineer and Tax Map is now under the auditor, therefore equipment is no longer needed.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Cordes, County Administrator.
Do we wanna go to the hearing?
9:45.
Probably a good idea.
Yep.
Thank you. Last week, the Commissioners upgraded their resolution passed in 2007 in support of the scenic river concept on the Vermillion River and it said that we suspended Section 2 until further consideration. This morning, we have with us, together with a host of property owners, I assume, people who are of interest, we have two representatives from the Northwest Ohio Scenic River who are here at the request of the Board of Commissioners, Tim Kwiatkowski, who's the Vermillion River Manager, and Bob Gable, who's the Program Manager. And we'd like to ask them to give a little history about what's going on there. If you come to either microphone, we welcome you, either one.
Either one.
Or do both if you want.
Thank you, Madam President. My name is Bob Gable and I am the Scenic River Program Manager. My office is in Columbus, Ohio, 2045 Morris Road. Appreciate the opportunity to come before the County Commissioners today and talk about the proposed Scenic River designation for the Vermillion River. I'll start here with just a little bit of background about the Scenic Rivers Program and then talk a little more specifically about what we're proposing for the Vermillion. Scenic Rivers Program is all about working with local landowners, local governments, conservation organizations to protect the Ohio's finest remaining river and stream systems. Currently, we have 14 designated systems across the whole state, that includes about 800 miles designated river miles. That's a very small fraction of Ohio's rivers and streams, so really, this, having a river designated as a wild scenic or recreational river is actually a badge of honor for these streams and for the local communities. It says that the local communities, the landowners along the stream have taken care of the stream, done a good job taking care of it, and also that it is one of the best streams remaining in the state of Ohio. So it is a rare honor for a river to receive such a designation. The Ohio Revised Code, Section 1547.81, provides the authority for the Director of the Department of Natural Resources to designate rivers as wild scenic or recreational rivers. And there are three different classifications, wild scenic and recreational. From a legal perspective, they're all the same, off of the same level of protection, but they, those different classifications just reflect the degree of natural character that each stream possesses. But anyways, the authority to designate does rest with the Director in 1547.81 and basically the designation is the designation of the water course, the river stream itself, and adjacent lands out to 1,000 feet on either side, and this becomes what's called a scenic river area. And I'll get into what that, what the scenic river area means, that actually refers to the, another section of the Revised Code with regard to the limited regulatory authority that we have, but basically, the designation does include an area, a wild scenic or recreational river area. Now, the same section of code, 1547.81, also provides for the protection of private property rights, and I know we gave you a copy of the designation study for the Vermillion. These chapters of the scenic river law from the Ohio Revised Code are contained within the study, so if you want to reference them or even have the county prosecutor reference them, obviously, you know, do that and so you can see what I'm talking about. But there's a section of 1547.81 that provides for the protection of private property, says basically that a declaration by the Director that an area is a wild scenic or recreational river area does not give the Department of Natural Resources or any other governmental entity or any local political subdivision the right to restrict the use of land by the owner thereof. It also goes on to say that that declaration does not provide for any access by the department to the private property or any access by any other governmental entity or the public.
Can I ask you a question, because I'm looking at a section here and it says, "The Director may enter into a lease or other agreement with a political subdivision to administer all or part of a wild scenic or recreational river area and may acquire real property or any estate, right, or interest therein in order to provide for the protection and public recreation use of a wild scenic or recreational river area."
Yes.
So you have the opportunity to take their land.
Okay, that's the, I believe that's the, that paragraph after the one I just cited?
It's the 15, it's the exact same, it's the exact same section that you were talking about.
Yeah, let me address that. That section gives the department the authority to acquire land along a designated wild scenic or recreational river area, and we have done that along other scenic rivers across the state. We actually own almost 2,500 acres on other rivers across the state. And that chapter, when you're referring to the lease, that also gives us the authority, the Director of the Department, the authority to lease those properties back out to a local entity.
So like a kayaking company can, you can lease it to them and then people could have kayaks going up and down their backyard?
We've never leased it to a private entity, we've always leased to another government political subdivision. For example, on the Little Miami River, which has been designated since 1969 in Clark, Green, Warren, and Hamilton Counties, we own several sites along the Little Miami River that we lease back to the Green County Metropolitan Park District and they manage the sites for low-impact recreational use, hiking trails, moat hiking trails, fishing, canoe access, kayak access, things of that nature. So that's what that paragraph gives us, the authority to do those things.
And what about the 1,000-foot that has been brought up last week at our meeting that you can take or acquire or have access to, 1,000-foot along the entire river?
No, that's not, that's not what it says now. If you go back to the paragraph I just referenced where it protects private property rights, it says that declaration by the Director does not give the department any authority over land within the area, this wild scenic recreational river area, or the right to enter. And that's the paragraph I just referenced a minute ago. That's right in the Revised Code. I don't have it in front of me, I would read it, cite it if you want.
They gave us a copy, here you go, Jim.
The other point I'd like to make, when you started out, you said it's an honor for this river to even get this designation. It means it's a very well-maintained river, which makes me think that these people that own this property have been taking care of the river and, you know, that concerns me, why all of a sudden, you know, the Ohio Department of Development wants to come in and designate this river when it's already been well taken care of?
That's a good question, and you know, we've brought a lot of assets to local communities on other scenic rivers, we've been very effective at getting grant money, bringing grant funds to local communities for various types of projects. One example we did a few years ago on the Kukoczing State Scenic Rivers, we took some funding from our Scenic River License Plate Fund, which I don't know if any of you are familiar with that, but we have a special license plate that brings some money to the Scenic Rivers Program. Took some money from that license plate fund, made it available through the local soil and water district for livestock exclusion projects from the Kukoczing Scenic River and its tributaries. Basically, what this involved was these monies would be made available to interested landowners and they could fence their cattle out of the stream and get the fencing and the installation paid for 100%, and they had to basically enter a 15-year agreement with the Soil and Water District to maintain that fence and that exclusion from the stream. We originally made $25,000 available to the SWCD, we received over $75,000 worth of applications, which in our opinion was a phenomenal success to get that kind of return or interest in that program, and in the end, we funded about $33,000 worth of fencing projects. So that's just one example of the kinds of programs that we can bring to the local communities to help or enhance the protection efforts on these local designated rivers.
But while you're protecting, you also may be limiting, like last week, we were, they were, some people were talking about dredging and the fact that they may not be able to dredge the river because it would be protected by this designation, so it may affect many property owners and businesses along that river.
That's not in fact true. Hang on just a second, let me continue here so I can...
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Maybe I'll provide some clarification on these issues as I go along here. I wanted to first go back to the paragraph in 1547.81 that protects private property and cite that, read that if I may. Declaration by the Director that an area, and it says that an area, so that refers back to the 1,000-foot, because if you remember, I just, a minute ago, I said the scenic river area is the 1,000-foot corridor and the water course. So declaration by the Director that an area is a wild scenic or recreational river area does not authorize the Director or any governmental agency or political subdivision to restrict the use of land by the owner thereof or any person acting under the landowner's authority. So that even protects a farm lease, you know, if an operator's leasing a farm and chilling right up to the edge of the river, whatever. It further goes on to say... It further goes on to say, or to enter upon the land and does not expand or abridge the regulatory authority of any governmental agency or political subdivision over the area. Once again, the wild scenic or recreational river area is what's referring to, the one-thousand-foot corridor. So that adequately protects the private property rights. Now, if I can...
You guys, you got a two-thousand-foot corridor.
Okay. Now, I wanted to cite fifteen forty-seven point eight-two, which isn't in here, isn't in this, this piece here. Fifteen forty-seven point eight-two is where the regulatory authority lies within the scenic river law. And basically, what that says, and I'll paraphrase here, is that the Director of the Department of Natural Resources, thank you, sir. I'll paraphrase it first and read it. Basically, the Director of the Department of Natural Resources has approval authority over publicly-funded projects within the wild scenic or recreational river area, that would be the one-thousand-foot corridor on either side of the river, outside of municipal corporation limits. And it's only in effect outside of municipal corporation limits due to the fact that Ohio is a constitutional home rule authority and, as you know, cities and villages have a great deal of ability and freedom to govern themselves. But I'll go ahead and read that section. No state department, state agency, or political subdivision shall build or enlarge any highway, road, or structure, or cause a modification of the channel of any wa, of any water course within a wild scenic or recreational river area, that's again, the one-thousand-foot corridor, outside the municipal, outside the limits of a municipal corporation without first having obtained approval of the plans for the highway, road, or structure or channel modification from the Director of Natural Resources or the Director's representative. The Court of Common Pleas, having jurisdiction, upon petition by the Director shall enjoin work on any highway, road, or structure, or channel modification for which such approval has not been obtained. So again, in a nutshell, that gives our department approval over publicly-funded pieces of infrastructure within the designated wild scenic or recreational river area. Examples of that would be highways, roads, bridges, culverts, sewer lines, things of this nature that may be proposed within that designated wild scenic or recreational river Last section I wanted to touch on here, Section fifteen forty-seven point eight-four, which provides for if a river is designated as a wild scenic or recreational river area, that the Director of Natural Resources shall appoint a local advisory council comprised of not more than ten members. And basically, the role of the advisory council is to advise the Director with regard to issues that pertain to that particular wild scenic or recreational river corridor. We always try to find a diverse cross-section of representatives for this advisory council, local landowners, local business owners. We have county commissioners that sit on, county engineers for other rivers in the state, Farm Bureau members. And basically, that way, all the possible concerns and questions that arise in that river corridor can be addressed and we get adequate feedback from this good cross-representation of individuals on these councils. So with that, are there any questions on the Revised Code?
Can you make some clarification, because I spoke to Director Logan, about the difference where you have now moved the scenic river designation from one department to another and they are working out the Ohio Administrative Code on, because there's some confusion here as of last week. Both were being quoted, the Revised Code and Administrative Code, and it's kind of difficult to, you know, differentiate the two. But they're in the process of rewriting the OAC, because when we had our discussions last week, again, my part came from the private property and the business owners, the dredging, breaking of ice, because there are safety issues down there in protecting properties. The clarification really wasn't there. And Director Logan did say they were working on having those all revised and since it's moved over. So explain the difference in the programs and how it's being designated, just for some clarification process, because we're looking at some old stuff and some new stuff right now.
Yes.
And they are confrontational at best.
Okay. And you mentioned dredging, so I'm gonna go back to your question real quick with regard to dredging and the impacts on businesses. Going back to the, again, the sections of Revised Code that I just cited, a publicly-funded project, if you had a publicly-funded dredging project that was occurring within a wild scenic or recreational river area, technically, that would need to be approved by the department. A privately-funded dredging operation would not. So that's the, from a legal perspective, that's how that would play out with regard to dredging. We typically, or traditionally, don't designate historically-dredged sections of rivers. So we would not, it would not be in our best interest. I mean, dredging is an, is an impact to a river. So it's kind of contradictory, contradictory to protecting the natural stream corridor, which is what the Wild Scenic and Recreational Rivers Program is about. So we're not interested in laying a designation over a historically-dredged section of any river. It's not conducive to what we're doing. Back to your question with regard to the Ohio Administrative Code, what people have found and what they're concerned about are rules that pertain to the governance or the use and visitation of lands that we own along these wild scenic and recreational rivers. So as I mentioned a few minutes ago, we have about twenty-five hundred acres that we own statewide. We have rules for what kinds of activities can go on, on those lands. A lot of these parcels are small, thin corridors, sections of corridor along rivers, they're not very large. So, for example, public hunting is not a permissible activity, just because it's very difficult to open a fifty-acre strip of land along a river for public hunting. There's not a lot of space, you get hunter conflicts, so on and so forth. However, other activities like fishing, hiking, nature study, those types of activities are permitted on many of these properties. So those are, the Ohio Administrative Code rules is what lays out what can occur and not occur on these different properties that we own. Last summer, the Scenic Rivers Program was transferred from the Division of Natural Areas and Preserves to the Division of Watercraft, and that was part of restructuring within ODNR to address budgetary challenges. With that transfer, the lands transferred from the scenic river lands, which were under the management of the Division of Natural Areas and Preserves, transferred to the management of the Division of Watercraft. The old ru, the old rules that were under DNAP, or Natural Areas and Preserves, that governed the scenic river lands, need to be revised now that the program and the lands have transferred, so that we have a set of rules within the Division of Watercraft for the management of these lands. That's what we are in the process of doing right now, is revising these rules. The Division of Natural Areas and Preserves was, their protection of natural areas and other features across the state, they had quite restrictive rules, because some of these natural areas are very small, relic habitats that no longer exist in Ohio, very sensitive. So a lot of those rules were very, very restrictive.
Not to interrupt you, Bob, but these rules go back to the seventies, last time they were revised, correct, in our Administrative Code?
Yes, that's, that's my understanding.
Okay.
But a lot of these rules were also applied to scenic rivers lands, because they're part of the natural areas and preserves system. Now they're not. So the new set of rules within the Division of Watercraft will be more relaxed, more, more activities will be permitted on these properties. But again, the important thing to note here is this is just, these are just for property that we own. These rules do not in any way, shape, or form govern or restrict the use of land in the scenic river area on the private property.
There is no, there is no acquisition process. You don't carry any eminent domain powers at all within ODNR, do you?
The state of Ohio carries eminent domain powers, obviously, but eminent domain has never, and I'm on the record here in television, eminent domain has never been used by Scenic Rivers Program.
Yet.
In, in the forty, forty-two-year history.
Best of ours does.
Okay, so I'll finish up here. Basically, what we've proposed for the Vermilion, Tim Kwakawski conducted the study and currently proposed a designation of twenty-five point three miles, basically from river mile one point eight, which was in the original proposal, the most upstream marina on the Vermilion, upstream to the Huron County Line, and then the East Fork from five-eleven in Kipton downstream to the confluence with the Vermilion. We're now considering moving that downstream designation limit back to, I believe it's river mile two point eight, which would be the start of the Metro Parks area on both sides of the river.
That would have no impact on any of the businesses north, correct?
Right.
Two-point-eight mile.
Right. So that gets us, again, that gets us away from those marinas, gets us away from the dredging activities and those concerns. So that's currently proposed. Directors can, giving that some various, very serious consideration. In closing, and I'll give Tim an opportunity here, but in closing, I'd just like to say that at this point in time, what we'd like to ask everyone, and this would be political subdivisions, riverfront landowners, businesses along the river, just, you know, let's stop and take a breath here, give us a chance to talk with you, communicate with you, discuss the scenic river law, make sure that everybody has an understanding of the scenic river law, the realities of it, the pluses and the minuses of the designation. And then, you know, later on, if you want to make a decision that says, "I support this or I don't support it," that's fine. But I'm asking people to make informed decisions. A lot of local political subdivisions have, I think, reacted very quickly and abruptly with, by rescinding resolutions that they originally passed supporting the designation study. A lot of people, I think, have reacted very quickly at the end and negatively, without fully understanding the program and the scenic river law. And I just, you know, I want people to make informed decisions, educated decisions, not reactionary decisions that, that are based on myths or misconceptions about, about the program and the law.
I mean, I almost have to agree with State Rep. Murray, who sat in, was talking with the Director, that through the years, you guys work on the Administrative Code on how this process is going to be. I mean, it can't even be encouraged, there can't be a consideration to designate this year on a bat. And again, moving it back to two-point-eight mark, two-point-eight mile mark, then doesn't affect our local business people, our livelihood, our tourism. I mean, a lot of the engine that drives Vermilion's economy and our lakefront, but I mean, I think from the standpoint, I understand we all have tough budgets, we don't have bodies we had before, but this Administrative Code really has to be looked at and, before anything's done. So I mean, at this point, I think it's going to be a lot of work on the ODNR's part and whoever's writing your Administrative Code. I don't know if you have Legislative Services do this, I don't know who does the Administrative Code for the departments, but, you know, I can't see moving forward at this point. I don't want to rescind either, not support, because we did this three years ago, but I think we have to really sit back before any actions are taken. I appreciate you guys coming. Commissioner Blair made the phone call. I talked to Representative Booth last week when these folks were here. And the lady who owns the campground resonated with me last week. Thank you very much. But at this point, I think you'll go through next with three or four hearing processes that you have scheduled. I hope to be in Vermilion this evening if the schedule allows, and see exactly what's set. But backing up to two-point-eight mile, I think, is a start, because then you're not upsetting our business people who have employees. But I, there's not, a lot of work in this Administrative Code, it's quite confusing and so, I appreciate you coming today.
We're gonna work on that and the, I mentioned the DNAP, the Natural Areas and Preserves rules, those are actually going to be rescinded. They're going to submit those to be rescinded to the Legislative Services Commission, and then we will submit our new rule package here soon to, to take place, take the place of the rescinded rules. So we are working to that end of having a current rule set, and again, just for the properties we own along, along these scenic rivers, so. And you mentioned the public meeting tonight, that's part of our, like I said, everybody take a deep breath, step back here, let's talk. We've scheduled a series of public information sessions. The first is this evening, at Vermilion Lake Clubhouse, right, Tim? At seven PM. And we also have sessions scheduled for May twenty-seventh, June eighth, what's the last day? I'm drawing a blank here.
June thirtieth.
And June thirtieth, so. And again, we want to solicit more input, more comments, we're going to reach out to more of the riverfront property owners along the river, get their, get feedback from them. And like I said, hopefully, you know, everybody will give us a chance here, talk with us, and let's all, make sure we all understand each other before everybody makes their final decision.
But I would think, my discussions though, that, and I'm gonna hit you with this, Bob, that currently, two thousand and ten, there is no concerted action by the ODNR to move forward in doing the actual designation, correct? Until the Administrative Code is worked out, I mean, the state reps are asking that to happen and to, you know, not to do anything this year until all these questions get answered and you have the ability to, and the opportunity to rewrite all this code so it can actually be understood and clarified. Is that correct?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna take our time, take a long, hard look at all this, gather as much information as common as we can. Ultimately, the authority to designate does rest with the Director, so I don't want to make any definitive statements on his behalf. He will, my understanding is he will be available this evening at the, at the public information session, but he has taken all this information, and he was at the Vermilion City Council meeting last week. He's taken all this information, taking all this input, and he will certainly use that in his decision-making process with regard to the designation. And we've slowed things way down and, like I keep saying here, we just want to, you know, have a chance to talk with more people.
Tim? Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Well, thank you for letting us come here today and speak and try to clarify some of the issues that have been brought up. I wanted to touch base on the process of how we designate the river. And granted, in the forty-two-year history, we've never really experienced any opposition like this. We move forward with the resolutions and then going to the designation. Internally now, we're, we're talking about reviewing the process of how we go about designating There's fourteen designated rivers in the state of Ohio, and Ashtabula, which was designated in two thousand and eight, had one-hundred percent support from the community. So going into these communities, we weren't expecting any opposition when we seeked our resolutions, did our study, and issued our intent to designate. I cite Ashtabula again, the county has three designated river systems in it. The community up there is fully supportive of Scenic Rivers Program. The community understands how the program works and protects its river systems. There's no opposition from private property owners on land acquisition, they understand how the program works. Like I said...
If you need medical help, we'll get it for you, otherwise, please be quiet.
Going back to the designation process, like I said, we are looking internally as how we go about with the process, starting with the resolutions of supporting the study, and then possibly in the future, we'll look back after we produce the study, going back and seeking resolutions to designate from the local communities, so. We were taken back by the opposition in the community here, and internally, we're reviewing the whole process, so.
Well, every day's a new day and we learn something new.
Yes.
I understand that you were the author of the eighty-seven-page report.
Correct.
Okay, and I would like you to speak to a comment that was made here last week. The cost of that was about two-hundred-and-four thousand dollars. I believe you and I discussed that, and that was not entirely accurate.
No. The Office of Coastal Management receives grant funding from the federal government from the National Oceanic Atmospheric Administration, and that funding is channeled through the Office of Coastal Management on Coastal Resources. The Vermilion enters into the Lake Erie. So the Office of Coastal Management actually granted funds to the, well, it was DNAP before, but we'll just say the Scenic Rivers Program, to do a scenic river study and a watershed plan for the Ashtabula in two thousand and six, and then funds for the Vermilion in two thousand and seven, which is ongoing. And those fundings not only will produce four documents to improve water quality, but also fund salaries for programs and, and cost to do the study. So in all, the two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars, I'm not sure on all the figures, I don't have it in front of me right now or actually review it, but those actually produce four documents, lengthy documents, that will improve water quality throughout the watersheds of Ashtabula and Vermilion.
Thank you, but not just one.
Correct.
Thank you. There was a letter this morning in the Morning Journal from State Representative Dennis Murray commenting on this scenic river study, and he made some suggestions. Commissioner Kalo alluded to some of them, and one of them being specifically that to give everyone involved time to carefully consider the new proposal, which he's hoping there will be, and obtain answers to... and obtain answers to remaining questions. He clearly communicate that no action should be taken in 2010. There were some copies of that letter put in the back. So I guess that I would put that comment on the table for discussion among the board here. And I also noticed that, is Dan Martin in the audience? Dan indicated that he would be here this morning. I did not see him. I want to give him an opportunity to speak if he's here. Okay. And I see that State Representative Terry Boos is here. Terry, do you have any comment that you'd like to make? If so, you need to come up to the, to the podium. This is twice.
Yeah.
Last week and this week.
Two weeks in a row.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity. You know, it, I agree that it would be nice to, to put it off to 2010. I would think that we need to continue with the hearings that we're going to have and the meetings so that the people get educated at the same time. So I think we cannot stop, or we don't want to stop the process of the hearings, but putting it off for at least 2010 would be probably a good direction to go to at this time.
2011.
Or 2011, thank you.
No.
What's that?
Well.
Put it off for a year.
You're speaking.
Right. To put it off at least to a year, but that doesn't mean we don't continue to look at it throughout the whole year.
Thank you for your comments.
Agreed, Terry, thank you. Did you happen to get a list of all the questions and concerns that we talked about last week?
No, I was hoping I'd get that tonight at the meeting.
Okay, all right, thank, can you get me, provide me a copy?
I will.
Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, how do you want to proceed?
Well, I, I just want to say you guys are nice guys. I'm sure you're very nice guys. Your job is, I guess, to do studies and your job is to sell the idea of a scenic river. My job, however, is to represent these people out here. And we don't usually have this many people in our hearing room. Let me tell you, taxes, when we pass a tax, we didn't have this many people in the hearing room. So obviously, this means a lot to these people. You know, the, the fact that their land may be, you know, infringed upon or taken from them or whatever. So you guys have a tough sell and I will be convinced when they're convinced. So that's my comments.
Pardon me?
Come to the microphone.
Betty's the president of the board.
Come to the microphone. Remembering what George Burns says, the secret of a good sermon is to have a good beginning, a good ending, and to have the two as close as possible together. Come to the microphone, please, if you'd like to speak. It isn't that we don't want to hear what you have to say. We did hear quite a few comments last week and, thank you, gentlemen, sit down. And the reason why we had this meeting today was so that we could expand upon what we heard last week. Because this is a topic of great concern for all of us.
Please state your name.
Name, name an address, please.
Thank you for your.
Pull the microphone up. Sir, the microphone.
Thank you for giving the opportunity to speak. First, Mr. Boos.
Sir, name and address.
My name's Todd Newsome. I live on 4665.
And you spoke last week. Thank you, Todd. No, we didn't.
No, West River Road.
We got your email.
What is your address?
West River Road.
Apologize.
Mr. Boos spoke that, that people need to be more educated before we go ahead with this. The people are educated, that's why we're here. People, the townships and the city of Vermillion didn't rush into any action of being informed by rescinding their support. They rushed into it by giving their support to begin with, and once they became informed, they rescinded their support. A little bit contradictory to what these gentlemen are saying here. The scenic river designation doesn't do anything at all to help the landowners and their local residents of the river. All it does is give them problems. That's why we have this large turnout here today. This thousand-feet rule they're speaking of is people who like to traverse the river, free range, come onto your property, among other things. Now, we know that the scenic river program is underfunded and has, in recent, in the last year or so, been taken off the support of the General Fund of Ohio, has been switched over to funding to the Division of Watercraft. Their scenic river license plates, they're losing massive amount of funds. At one time, they were collecting as much as $180,000 a year off the sales of these license plates. They're down to, I believe, under $70,000 a year now. They are now being funded off of the license being sold for watercraft, a four percent of that fee. They are also, Division of Watercraft has instituted a five-dollar conservation fee to non-motorized boats, kayaks, canoes. This is how they're being funded now. It's not hard to look, read into it that they are under pressure to designate more and more of these rivers and watersheds as scenic rivers so they can take control of the areas around these rivers. So they can instigate, institute, maybe, maybe it won't be private, maybe it will be other agencies controlled by the ODNR or the state to put in canoe libraries and things like that along the rivers. That's, we, all these extra licenses, they will be getting for all the additional kayaks and canoes and rowboats. Any non-motorized boat is, is a source of funding. This is a, a money grab and it's the way they need to do it to control it. Their funding of the scenic river program is based on the Division of Watercraft now. I may ask you, the scenic river, the Vermillion River is a scenic river, if they call it one or not. That's thanks to all the landowners and local residents who have taken care of it to this point. All this does is add red tape and causes issues for everyone in this room. And we don't see the need for.
Thank you.
We've taken very good care of the river at this point. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, Dan.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning, Dan.
I'm Dan Martin. I'm the director of Lorraine County Metro Parks and I apologize for being late. Some things, sometimes things are beyond our control. I do want to thank you for the opportunity to be in here this morning. You know, I've been the director of the metro parks for the last nineteen years in Lorraine County and our organization's been around for the last fifty-two years. I know, I guess I'd like to talk about a few things that I hope that we could all agree upon this morning. And I think that, I think if we can come to some common ground on things that we agree on, I think that we might all have a, a better understanding. I think that we would all agree that the Vermillion River is our finest natural resource in Lorraine County. I don't think that that's in question.
Thank you.
The park district has worked with the local community for the past fifty-two years to protect that valley. You know, the very first metro park, the very first land donation that started our park system was the Bacon Woods property donated back fifty-two years ago. And we're very, very proud of that. I'd like to point out that over ninety percent of the park land lies in the valley. Over the years, we have acquired a lot of that property and protected it. And we've tried to limit most of our land acquisition to the valley. And I think that that's created a lot of our good neighbors. Something I think is very important to be pointed out is every Sunday when you pick up the, pick up the paper and look at the home listings in the, in the paper every Sunday, you'll see listings for property all over this county. And I take great pride in the fact that when you read those housing listings, that you'll often notice that, you know, those talk about the location and the value of those properties. And repeatedly, you'll see located next to Lorraine County Metro Park. I assume that when, when, when realtors advertise that, that means that, that that's a, that's a valuable asset. And, and I think that when you look at the last twenty years, that a lot of folks that have lived there all their lives and the new folks that have moved to the, to the valley have moved there because they've lived next to the, to the metro parks. And we think that they're good neighbors. We know that people want to live next to the park and, and we value those as neighbors. And I think that what I would hope that we could all agree on, that the park has added great value to the community. And I would think that the community has certainly added great value to the park. We value our neighbors that live along the, along the park out, out in Vermillion. I did want to say a couple of things about ODNR. I'd like to point out that ODNR has been a valuable partner in Lorraine County. They've helped with hundreds of projects, way too numerous, numerous to mention. And I will say frankly, that ODNR has not handled or not done a very good job of explaining the scenic rivers program. And, and that's very, very unfortunate. I would also think that we ought to recognize and agree upon the fact that Director Logan has pledged to improve that process and answer the questions that you have before you today. And I would certainly encourage ODNR to meet with the community and, and try to improve those communications. I'd like to close my comments with the fact that, you know, we're all here today because we know the Vermillion River is an incredible place. We all want to protect it for future generations. How best to accomplish this needs more discussion. But please keep in mind the importance of the river's fragile ecosystem. That's got to be foremost in our mind. It is the best. You know, when you, whether you're talking about the steelhead or the mussels that live there or the eagles, it is the finest natural resource in our county. And I'd like to close by reminding the residents that while you've been great neighbors to us, we've been good neighbors to you. And that is number one in our mind and our importance. We're very, very proud of that relationship and we will see that the park will always be protected and will continue to be good neighbors. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. Questions?
I, I just want to say, are you in, are you together with ODNR on this particular designation? Are you separate or are you together? Because there was some confusion last week.
The designation would be a great marketing tool. There's no doubt about that. Clearly, ODNR's rollout has left a lot to be desired, Commissioner. You know, they've not done a very good job of explaining it. That's why these folks are here today. Well, we, we'd love to see it designated, but until these people are satisfied with those answers, I recommend that you, you take more input. It's important that these people's concerns be answered.
Thank you.
And that they feel good about it. But, but let's never lose sight of what's important. What's important is that we protect the valley.
Okay. I, I don't know that this was Metro Park or ODNR, but I did get a call from a Mr. McQueen yesterday. I don't know if my fellow commissioners did, but he has property along the river. And without any knowledge or notification, they just went and rezoned his property and made it a floodplain. And, you know, he went to pull a building permit and he, you know, he was in a floodplain all of a sudden. So, you know, are they going to be able to do these things? And then there was Elizabeth Lamarche. They took like twenty acres of property from her, her and her family back when I-90 went in for the, the rest area. You know, where does it stop?
Those are questions for the state of Ohio.
Well, thank you. I'm glad that you, you came today and verified how, you know, how the metro parks are tied into this. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks, Dan.
You brought paper and you didn't show us? You have a map?
I, I did bring a map because I thought it was important. If, if the commissioners wanted this, I'll be happy to leave it behind. It does, it does reflect the public property along the river in Lorraine County. I can't speak to the other counties, but I did think that it was important for you. And I'll just leave it here.
Okay.
As a public record.
I beg to differ with Mr. Martin.
I, I just was sure that you would.
And in a positive way, Betty.
Oh, good.
And just to go back and put integrity into some things is he brought up a number about ninety percent. And he was talking about the river valley of the park lands. Well, first of all, I mentioned last week about their sixty-five-hundred acres of land in the county that we get no tax on to take care of the county with. And ninety percent is six thousand acres. So the Bacon family didn't give six thousand acres so you don't get confused about what we're talking about in this river valley. And Bacon family, which I, I knew some of them personally, and they were happy and proud to give that land for good reasons. It is a beautiful place. But I'll tell you, the Bacon family never expected the park to end up taking land eminent domain from neighbors right up the river, which they did. And there's no excuse for it. And actions speak louder than words and their actions are already on record. And they have all the rights to do and so on. And it's like, all I've heard of rumblings all over the county is when you asked that question, which was a good question of Mr. Martin, if they had association with ODNR. Now, I don't have a lengthy pedigree or education, but I know what kind of question it was. It was a yes or no question. And he must have been confused like ODNR has been quite often. And he couldn't get it in his mind, what you were saying to him. But I think a lot of people out here very much have it in their mind. Mr. Murray, he speaks about holding off till 2011. Well, you know, he's on the right trail, but he's running real slow and he's not going to catch the rabbit. Because we're not trying to do this and just play games and circle and circle and circle. And you know what? I like to get to the point when I'm doing something. And my point is to get the job finished. In my life, which is mostly over, I'm here for the people and I believe in the people's rights and our constitution. And I think if you did a little study on Ashtabula County, which I've got a number of customers up there, it's not all happiness. And they're not as, like, all smiles as you think. And they don't have a huge metro park driving it with sixty-five-hundred acres. The people in Vermillion have a beautiful town. And I've been going there since my neighbors got a driver's license when they were sixteen years old. And I was thirteen or fourteen, I could ride along. Plus, we went to Crystal Beach and Lynnwood Park and all of them and had picnics. And Betty, you and I are on the close enough page, you know what I'm talking about. And I still go to Vermillion. I still patronize the businesses. I still like it for a Sunday just to go do something. And the people up this river have always went down, whether you want to call it down or up, have always went down to the end of the river and enjoyed some of the things that were there in the summertime, boating and so on. And for a proven fact, we don't, do know how beautiful the river is. And we didn't have to spend a quarter of a million to analyze it and figure that out. And to Tim, it's like, you talk about the quarter of a million and the study and so on. Now, some people, and I've done a lot of foolish things in my life, believe me. But that's because I did a lot of them and the biggest percentage of them weren't foolish. But my question is, is why we got these rivers that are an absolute disaster in the state? And if we got this money to spin out and spread around, why aren't we working on the bad rivers? And, and one of the reasons, in my opinion, which is only in my opinion, because you can argue with me about it and I'll listen to your argument. But my opinion is. with me about it and I'll listen to your argument, but my opinion is, if you're going to go and check out an automobile and the things like new and perfect condition, you say, "I'm going to do everything I can to make it perfect," you're not committing to nothing. It's simple. All you got to do is fill the gas tank. Now, if you take one that's 20 years old with a lot of issues, there's a lot of grief, problems to solve, stress, what can we do about this? And it's what you call work. And you know what? Well, I'm a worker. My whole life, I've been a worker. I'm a hundred hour in a week guy that runs full speed and when I'm done, I'll be done. But I still work like that. And you know what? Some people call it a disease. It's called workaholic. Well, that might be what I am. But I listen to people all up and down this river and I know so many of them, you can't believe it, and there is not a soul. You can go all the way to Bailey Lakes and they don't like it. New London, Fitchville, Clarksfield, you just keep going. You want to have, you want to see some people. I mean, you could see 20 times the people here. Nobody's for it. And they're selling something that nobody wants, that I know of. And all I say is, the people that are on this river, they're responsible, they pay their taxes, their houses aren't falling down, they're not in foreclosure. It isn't like some other blighted areas of this county that I don't have to mention. But these are the responsible people that if, they don't have to say, "Can you prove what you've done?" They spent a quarter of a million dollars to admit what we've done. And I say, go fix the stuff that's broken, don't fix the stuff that's right. And furthermore, like, I say, these people that want to talk about 2011, I personally think it's a dream world they're in. I say what they need to do, face a problem, solve it and fix it and go on because there's more problems every day coming. And we don't need 2011 and 12 and 13 and 2020. I think it's established what we need and just like the responsible taxpayers, and I've heard it said here, about the responsible taxpayers, Betty, Ted, Lori, you don't need me to preach anymore to you about what's right. You know what's right. And if they do want to wait till 2011, finish rescinding it now. And when they come back to the drawing board with what's absolutely perfect and the people are putting their hand up and saying, "We like it," then go ahead because they already put you in a position. Intelligent people all over this county went for a study. Intelligent people, including you folks, went for a study and they were sold a bill of goods and had this buried. And I figured the other 14 rivers, probably most of them, if they'd had more things on the table, wouldn't be designated anyhow because they got a slit under the rug. And I think they got a little bit of a slowdown coming their way because I think more of the few of us left that are working and paying taxes, we're making demands about what's done with our money. I'm going to wrap it up there. I could talk to you for another 20 minutes, but I'm done and I'm going to say this. Please, as a responsible group of county commissioners, finish your rescindment for now. If they come to you someday that you believe in and they really got, don't wait till they rewrite, reanalyze, recircle, regroup, rescind. When they come to something that's on the table and legitimate and honest, then they, you know, without hidden language, then do business. And I think Jerry would support the type of thinking I'm saying. Thank you.
If anybody wants to ask me a question, I will answer.
Okay. Yeah. You all ready?
Yes.
Name and address, please.
Shawn Newsome, 3170 Jerusalem Road, Vermillion. Can I approach you? I have some stuff I'd like to hand to you.
Sure.
This is, I apologize if I didn't get this to you earlier. This is a petition signed by a lot of U N people.
Give it to the clerk, please. She takes care of all the good things.
I'd like to note that this is Johnny Hatcher, Secretary of Transit.
Johnny Hatcher.
He said he was going to, well, at this point, I was just looking.
We're asking you to.
He's got cancer.
We know John.
He signed our petition, Nick Globely's chairman of the county.
Whoa. Got some big hitters. We're all working for us.
Here is a copy of the case. I just got a couple pages of it.
Do you have a copy for me? What you're giving them?
I just have those four.
I got one for her.
I'll give you both.
No, you got it.
I'd like to start with this, the paper you have there in front of you. I think it's on page 910. I think I just copied the two pages. I have the complete, this is a court case and this is the State of Ohio, Ohio Department of Natural Resources answering the lawsuit on the lakefront property owners. But the State of Ohio in this is also claiming right over, not just the, this is not just a lakefront issue, but if you look at, on section 18, at the bottom of the, at the bottom of the, probably the first page there, and the rest of it is on the second page. I think the second page is page 10. But it says, federal law, this is the ODNR's opinion to the court, their argument. The federal law and Ohio law hold that after statehood, the title and rights of riparian that's upland that borders a stream, a river, stream or other such water course or littoral upland that borders a ocean, lake or bay of such by proprietors and the soil below the ordinary high watermark are governed by laws of several states subject to the rights granted in the United States by the constitutional. So, the ODNR are not only claiming the high watermark out on the lake, but they're including here river streams and upland water courses. We haven't heard that out of them. They haven't addressed this. They haven't addressed a lot of things. We had the dredging issue directly affect me, the Ohio EPA and their rules, there is no dredging on a scenic river. The Army Corps of Engineers, same thing, there is no dredging on a scenic river. When Tim came two years ago in December 2007 to the city of Vermillion, you know, he was asked point blank by the authority manager, Bill McCarthy, and he stated, "There is no dredging on a scenic river." Now, they have their internal rules and laws, the Ohio EPA, the Army Corps of Engineers, all three say there isn't. Now, they're coming back and saying, "Well, you know, it's only, we only have jurisdiction over if it's federally funded or we're funding it or something." They're not addressing the Ohio EPA or the Army Corps of Engineers. It says, you know, in this scenic river law, they have no authority over other government entities. They have not answered that question at all. This is third or fourth time they've been up here and they haven't answered a whole lot of questions for anybody. They say, "Well, we're considering moving this or that." I'm considering winning the lottery today, okay? They say they're not interested in historically dredged sections. My marina, the other marina across the river has historically been dredged for countless years. They know that, but they continue on with their push and pretty arrogant about it. They keep telling you that, "Well, you know, we're answering questions and the people out here need more information." We have the Ohio Revised Code. They have not given out the Ohio Revised Code other than at that first meeting. I think when they went around to all the townships and you find people, that they did not give you a copy of the administrative code or the Ohio Revised Code for what you look at. No, I think they did a little horse and pony show and everything is great, pat on the back and you guys probably, well, it sounds like a good idea because I think 99% of the people don't know any details. It sounds like a good idea until you actually dig into it. As you can see, they make internal rules all the time, change rules all the time, break rules all the time. How come we haven't seen administrative code rules out of them yet? They don't want us to know. Orrin last week showed you some where, you know, no hunting, no fishing, the list goes on and on. And they're trying to say, "Well, it's just included in the preserve area." It's not what it says. Read the law. Now, this Ohio scenic river law, I dropped off copies for you, but your law director, I'm sure, and other people's showed you the same law. It's contradictory in nature. But if you read the definition, right at the back, 1547.01, scenic river area, means an area declared a scenic river area by the director under this chapter includes those rivers or sections of rivers that are free of impoundments with shorelines and watershed still largely pruned and shorelines are largely undeveloped but accessible in places by roads. So, in the area that the director declares a scenic river area, that's the definition. And you go right down here, 1547.42, the Division of Watercraft shall administer, be administered by the chief of the Division of Watercraft. I want to make a quick note here, these Ohio scenic river laws have been changed since their inception because they, just recently in the last year, transferred from the area of scenic preserves over to the Division of Watercraft. So, this is not just old arcane law. These laws have been looked at and changed recently. But again, to the point, the chief may adopt, amend and rescind rules governing the use, visitation, protection and administration of scenic river areas, rules establishing fees and charges for all the following, the conducting of stream impact reviews for any planned or proposed construction, house, barn, you name it, modification, renovation or development property that may potentially impact a water course. On the page two, we keep talking and hearing about this thousand-foot rule, but it's not. There is, it says, "But shall not include any means more than a thousand feet from a warmer water lane or the water course unless an additional width is necessary to preserve water conservation, scenic fish, wildlife, historic or outdoor recreational values." It doesn't, it doesn't stop at a thousand feet. That would be like me saying, "I need a 10-foot of your yard, but if I need an extra more, then I need it also." So, you're thinking, "Well, is it 10 feet or what is it?" Well, you know, they're trying to sell this to, "Would you sign the deed or anything like that? I'm going to buy 10 feet off you or more if I need it?" I don't think so. The, you know, one of the main things is, we talk about eminent domain, but there's also situations where they acquire land, it speaks in here of acquiring land, not once, not like three different places. I'll go ahead and point it out. Each council, we don't know who is on this council, you know, this is for the scenic river area. I don't think any of the township trustees were approached to be on this council. But anyway, shall advise the chief on the acquisition of land and easements on the waters, on the lands and waters that shall include, be included in a wild scenic recreation area and other aspects for establishment and administration of the area that may affect local interest. That's section 1547.84. Up here at the end of section 1547.83, the chief may, or excuse me, any instrument by which real property is acquired. So, all through this document, it's acquiring property and speaks of it. That's called, that's private property. I don't think the ODNR acquires property for new highways. They would like you to believe that only our regulatory authority is only on roads and bridges and whatnot. But if you read the law, you have three pages of law here and you have one little, two lines there protecting the rights of the property owner. That's it. So, it's very contradictory. We have not, if you think you have a lot of questions, these people have went to meetings and went to meetings and our answer, we were not getting answers to the questions, contrary to what they keep telling you. Now, he, Bob Gable, spoke up here and said, "These people, we want them to have an informed decision." I can't believe that whatsoever, okay? And I'll tell you why. If they wanted us to have an informed decision on this, why did they adopt, the ODNR on March 8th of this year adopted laws in their administrative code. The public shall receive a minimum night, excuse me, a minimum 30 days notice, maximum 60 days notice on any public hearing or information meeting. The very next week, they violated the law they just adopted and gave us a five-day notice for the Vermillion Mill Hollow meeting. Okay? Then at the Vermillion Mill Hollow meeting, we're going there for an information meeting on the study and the designation. Where's the study at? This is our government going to come here and taking a lot of our property rights and don't care enough to inform us enough to have a copy of the study at their one planned information meeting down here at Mill Hollow? Where's the study? It's not available online, wasn't available at the meeting, a little slideshow. Where's the actual, they have yet to bring their administrative code here. And they keep saying, "Well, this section says this and this section says that." Why isn't it here? Why isn't it all spelled out for us? What are they hiding? They're not being transparent. They continue, "We're transparent. We're trying to help out." Bob, if you want to answer it, how come we're not, you know, you're not bringing any information? These people are all against it. The ODNR broke their own rules to, what's the, if we break rules, you know, there's always all kinds of punishment, but they make and break their rules as they please. It was brought up that the ODNR found this dump, I think some of the people in the ODNR was not aware of. It's in Wakeman, about a mile north of town. It's the old Wakeman Town Dump. The, I forget the name of the lady, she died, passed away roughly 10 years ago and left them a sizable amount of land, I believe 160 acres, could be a hundred, a sizable amount of property and this old dump was on it. Well, they started, the ODNR, a few years back, probably down in the river, I see this dump and they start questioning who owns it and they start sending, I believe it was Bob Tolliver, notes, letters, threatening letters. "We're going to find you daily. This needs to be cleaned up." Well, that was six or eight years ago. They found out it was on ODNR property. It's still there. They never cleaned anything up. They're mad about us making an informed decision. I continually, well, not lately, the newspapers, Norwalk Reflector, Sandusky Register, The Journal, The Chronicle, they seem to be reporting, more informed reporting, but initially, they kept interviewing these guys, "Oh, they just need more information." We've got information that we had to dug up ourselves, not because they supplied it. These other scenic rivers, if they got designated the same way that they planned on doing it, short notice, no information at the information meeting, if you read in The Journal, two days after the Mill Hollow meeting, they said, you know, it was advertised in there, "We're going to have a dedication ceremony on April 20th." You know, there was a show of hands that they did not want to put into minutes at Mill Hollow, only, I believe it was Molten Sailor, he's here today, if you want to hear him, but he had to three times tell them, "Well, I can't even put this into minutes." The show of hands was 34 against, 14 for. 14 for counted some people holding their hands up, ODNR metro park people, overwhelmingly against it. But two days later, you see the ad in The Journal, "We're going ahead with this designation on April 20th," until people got, you know, really fired up and yelling and screaming at the Brownham Township trustees. So, they're not about, contrary to what they've been telling you. They don't want an informed decision. The people here, I believe, are more informed than all these other scenic river designations. The city of Vermillion looked into this. Of all the townships around, you would think the city of Vermillion, as far as tourists goes, would have the most to lose. They looked at this, they informed, and they were aware of the lakefront battle with the ODNR, how the ODNR has lost in court. with the ODNR, how the ODNR has lost in court three times, and continued appeals, basically using taxpayers' money to fight taxpayers. Uh...
That's right.
I hope that you rescind your support today and listen to the voice of the people. Uh, the ODNR are not reaching out. Uh, just look at the, how the director supposedly has the, the power to authorize it and sign his name, uh, and make it a law. Uh, that would kind of go against your own personal, I would hope, feelings as to how something should be implemented on people. Uh, you have no real support of the people, uh, out here. The, the community by and large is against it. I, I would hope that you would, at this time, rescind your support for this, uh, based on that these people's questions have not been answered, they're against it. Uh, and that's basically all I have to say, uh, right now, but, uh, there's more to this than meets the eye. These people here have been digging around on the internet and stuff, and what they find is embarrassing, uh, to the ODNR, the ODNR is not addressing this. I've stood up at a number of meetings and, you know, voiced my concerns. I haven't, I don't feel like that I've got any answers. Uh, I've got some non-answers. You know, I like black and white, yes and no answers, or, or some semblance of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newsome.
My name is Angie Mayhew. I'm a new resident in Brownhill Township. My address is nine zero six one Peaslee Road. And I have stage fright.
No, you're fine.
Anyway, um, when I was looking for a home, I did a lot of research, and I found this little community. It was Brownhill. I was drawn to that community not because of metro parks, as they would like to think. I was drawn to it because of its history, the people that established Brownhill Township, people that walked there from Massachusetts, people that came there and, and acquired land and worked that land with their hands and made it their own. Now, there's this group of people that want to come in and say, "We want a thousand feet on each side of this river just because you live there for other people." Well, I think it's wrong. Everything inside me that it's about America says this is wrong. This is a wrong thing to do. Ancestor after ancestor, these people have taken care of that property. I'm just there only one year, but I love that community because of the type of people that live there. Whenever we talk about... We talk about, "We're trying to save this river." I don't think we're just trying to save a river. We're trying to save a community, a community of people that are truly the salt-of-the-earth type people, people that know how to work and hold on to things and are hard-working people. The biggest thing about that city to me was always the citizens themselves. And we as citizens, we think about being home of the free, or are we the home of the bullied? There are some people that are trying to bully this community into allowing them to have this river.
That's right.
You're thinking that this is a scenic river that's supposed to be protected. If we allow and invite thousands of people to come and walk and tramp and be part of that river, we're not protecting it. The best thing that we can do as a community is to stop what is trying to happen here. Don't let it happen at all, and we will continue to protect that river and make Lorain County proud of that river. It doesn't have to be shared with the world. It is ours. Let us have it and enjoy it. You mentioned that it's a rare honor, honor to have this river. I think it's a better honor to honor the citizens around the river.
Thank you, Angie.
I don't cry easy, but I was almost crying. My name's Terry Durakis. I'm here in support of the lower river assessment or assignment of this scenic river. I live in Clarksville on Zenobia Road, fifty-three twenty Zenobia Road. I'm here representing a lot of people upriver that have a great deal of fear of what's coming, that can't be here today because they're out protecting the river, working to pay their taxes. I hear a lot about preservation. I hear an awful lot about preserving something that's already in pristine shape. It's been uttered over and over again. Um, we go out in the country and we make a lot of sacrifices. We don't have the city services. We struggle against twenty-two-inch snow. We, we buy equipment. We, we spend tax dollars in this county for tractors and snowplows and snow blowers. We fight the elements. We keep everything neat and clean. We protect it. We go way far and beyond what most people have to deal with because we love what we have, we respect what we have, and we preserve it with everything inside of us because we're sacrificing to have it and to keep it. This is an insult to all of us to tell us that a two-thousand, not a one-thousand-foot corridor, one-thousand feet from each bank on each side of the river or more is necessary is a two-thousand-foot. They obfuscate. This is two-thousand feet with my calculations of twenty-five miles even. Now, I hope I'm correct on this. I've checked it and checked it. I'm calculating six thousand sixty-one acres in that two-thousand-by-twenty-five-mile area. That's doubling metro parks area like that.
Same.
Thank you. That's six, over six thousand acres you're affecting here that we, we're scared, we're terrified. We don't know whether to, so, we don't know what to do. You've got us terrified. This is the biggest, I mean, we have case law that shows over and over again, they've, they've lost. As recently as two thousand and six, they've tried to take property. They're still working on it. This is an assault on the whole northern Ohio area, everybody that's near water. This is absolutely absurd. You want to protect something? Protect your greatest asset, the taxpayer, the people that are still building the right. [applause] Now, I know these guys have a job to do. I've had jobs that I've had to do. Some jobs are less palatable than others. Not everybody's gonna be a hero in their job, but this is wrong for a lot of reasons. This, they know it, we know it. They have fought battles on this. They've already faced people dislike us. We've heard stories of three-quarters of a million dollars spent over a nine-year period fighting these guys. They keep coming at you and coming at you and coming at you. Next year, no, not next year, today. No, no.
[applause] My name's Larry Horton. Uh, I had to write down my notes, uh, because there's so much information here, I didn't want to lose my train of thought. But, uh, my, uh, address is one zero four one seven, State Route sixty. I'm actually the last landowner, the most southern landowner affected by this proposal. Um, first of all, Bob mentioned, uh, the negative reaction of the people. I believe the people reacted, uh, in such a way because ODNR dropped the ball from the very beginning. Uh, I believe that they should have went to the various courthouses and, um, and got addresses from the, the river landowners and sent them certified letters.
Right.
Uh, personally, I think this whole thing is less about the river itself and more about justifying jobs at ODNR. Uh, this morning, we all pledge allegiance to the United States of America. I always thought the United States of America was a land of opportunity. I've always been a model citizen. I've worked long and hard to be able to purchase a piece of property along the river, and I do not want the, some government agency to step in and take a part of that property to administer it, basically for no reason at all. Landowners purchase riverland because of its scenic beauty and are determined to protect it themselves for that reason, which is why it's in the pristine, pristine condition it is in today. Uh, as everyone can see in the news, the government is very unpopular throughout the world, and it seems like it's getting more unpopular every day by its own citizens, and this proposed land acquisition is another example of this. I, I thank you for your attention, and I ask you today to recommend that you, that they cease and desist this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horton.
Uh, I am, uh...
My goodness.
First off, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am J. Tom Lindrum, a professional engineer and a former member of the Ohio House. I know little about the scenic river program, and I admit that. However, the situation brings to mind my experience in two thousand while in the House, a very long and expensive experience, which is just now going to the Supreme Court after nine years and over three hundred thousand dollars in expenses. At that time, ODNR laid claim to lake property below high watermark based on the faulted claim and violation of the Constitution, common law, and common sense. The people mostly from Avon Lake and Avon believed they were right. I agreed to enter a House bill which passed easily, but which did not have time to clear the Senate. I was redistricted out, but Tim Grandell and a bunch of other fine people got the bill through. ODNR, environmental groups, and the state continued to fight. Now, that is in the court, and I hope a decision will be made in the next few days, giving the property rights back to the people. Uh, it took a lot of private money, or as I said, over three hundred thousand dollars to defend the property rights of the individuals along the lake, and you're going to run into the same situation here. ODNR taking over deeded land for public use without compensation. As I understand it, two thousand feet by twenty-five miles, some sixty-four hundred acres, would go under ODNR control. I assure you that they will have walking paths on the shoreline, ramps with parking areas, picnic areas with grills, tables, restroom facilities, dog runs, beer cans, and trash. If, uh... If this project does go through, this is up to you. I'm, I'm a furor in this group now, being I live in Erie County. But if this does go through, you should have a very clear understanding with ODNR in writing. All property that they want to use for this project will be purchased from the present deeded owners. No, no consecration of private land. Two maintenance facilities to be provided by ODNR. They are pretty good at that. They'll probably do a good job, but you should have it definitely in writing that anything they put on this property should be defined by ODNR as being their responsibility, and they should take care of it. I don't want to belabor the point, but I want to point out to you again that if this thing does go through, it's gonna end up in a lawsuit, and somebody's gonna pay a lot of hundreds of thousands of dollars to defend your position. So, uh, ODNR has the power of state government. They can use all the state tax money, your tax money. They can use all that tax money they want, uh, but you can't. You're gonna have to fork it out of your pocket. So, I ask you, please, give very careful consideration, and if you decide to go ahead with this program, please have in writing from ODNR what it is they're gonna do, where they're gonna do it, and who they're gonna affect by it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, Don Clark, Oberlin, Ohio. Five South Main Street, Suite two seventeen. Citizens of Lorain County are rising up to this type of control, uh, which, uh, once you take it, you can't get it back. Uh, and, um, landowners have protected, and they are stewards of this land for generations and generations. They have, uh, one way or another, they have been able to, uh, have their livelihood and take care of this land, and, um, it will be greatly affected if their businesses and families have been, uh, taken by control. I, I call that a control situation, which to me is governmental regulation that Lorain County does not, or shouldn't not, have to deal with. Regulated or restricted by the OD, uh, ODNR ultimately leads to governmental regulation, as I said before, and I think the enjoyment of the land can be, uh, achieved the way we are doing it now, which is, we take care of the land, we're steward of the land. And, um, we pick up the, we, uh, we all pick up the beer cans. We, we all, we all know who goes to, uh, the river and who has to be called in to, uh, take care of placing in the drug activity that happens in certain areas. But I also wanted to add that, uh, this had been, uh, this river, Vermillion River watershed has been, um, uh, that you have received this. Have you seen the, uh, the watershed survey? This has come out.
Thank you.
Many years ago, uh, Capital Ventures, Oberlin College had substantial interest in holdings in that area, and they've sold off that, that third to a third party, and, uh, and that third party has, uh, taken care of the land. But also, there are, uh, other areas through, uh, uh, regulation that areas that could be taken by eminent domain. That's a great concern to me. Uh, I think it's a great concern for a lot of people that, uh, there are, uh, lands to be looked at, open spaces, uh, if it's possible. Um, but, well, I'd like to summarize lastly, is that this, uh, information was published through Oberlin College, the booklet, way before this study came out, so it was readily available, and it didn't cost, uh, came through the watershed district and, uh, and so forth. And, uh, you already have that particular map, and it shows you the fishing, uh, for steelhead and trout, and actually salmon are there too. So, everyone knows about this particular beautiful spot that has, uh, been, uh, through the generations of, uh, geology, through, uh, a lot of the Oberlin College geology department has done a lot of the, uh, surveys of the, of the land. So, uh, it, once it was given, uh, from Capital Ventures, then, uh, Dan Martin had an opportunity to pick up a substantial portion of that. Uh, to summarize, I, um, I, I would suggest that we put a no on the, on that resolution. And knowing that it hurts the lights, or, excuse me, that it hurts the, uh, property rights of landowners, and, uh, it would also curtail public access to, uh, property land and the, uh, keep homeowners stewards of their own property. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you for your comment.
Thank you very much for your courtesy in, in hearing us. My name is Bob Emery. I live at fourteen three oh two West Road, Wakeman, which is on the west side of the river just north of the county line. And I want to read, for whatever it's worth, a couple of letters that I had written, ones to the director, excuse me, the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. I said, "Dear sir, this is April twenty-sixth, twenty-ten. This letter is in response to your notice of intent to declare portions of the Vermillion River and adjacent private property as a scenic river area. I have read your legal notice and have attended the public hearing on the matter at the Mill Hollow Reservation. I am adamantly opposed to this proposed confiscation of my private property rights and will actively support and participate in any of the several organized group efforts seeking legal judgment to enjoin or prohibit the implementation of this proposal. This notice, as worded, declares that this proposal is being made, quote, 'in accordance with the provisions of section fifteen forty-seven dot eighty-one of the Ohio Revised Code, commonly known, excuse me, as the Ohio Scenic River Law.'" The vagaries-
The vagaries contained in this document amount to a blank check endorsement of the personal property rights of the persons whose industry and investments..." Excuse me. I didn't mean to... Let me read that again. "The vagaries contained in this document amount to a blank check abandonment of the personal property rights of the persons whose industry and investment over the years have preserved and maintained the river's environment, making it the attractive target that it presently is for intrusion by those who have no involvement in this preservation, but now seek to exploit and ravage it." (applause). "We are led to presume that some bureaucracy will now take the responsibility for assuring that those now, quote, 'entitled' to trespass upon our land will leave it as they found it and carry away with them any and all of their trash with them. These will be the same, quote, 'entitled' persons who now clutter up our roadside with plastic bags, beer and cola cans, candy wrappers, et cetera. You are invited to join us any week as we pick up and properly dispose of this cornucopia of trash dumped along our front yard, and now these same maggots are to be allowed to crawl over our much more out-of-sight back road. Forbid it, Almighty God, with apologies." (applause). "Over the years, we have allowed, upon request, supervised troops of Boy Scouts to embark and make camp on our property with a clear understanding that they would carry out anything that they brought in and nothing else, subject to our inspection when they were ready to leave. There has never been any problem with this. Please don't try to fix something that ain't broke." (applause). "And who will be there to police this visitation now? The same enforcement people that presently protect the cleanliness of our road frontage? Dear God, protect us from our protectors." (laughter) (applause). "Who will police trespassers on private property not included in this plunder? We have had snowmobilers who accessed the river somewhere come roaring up our private lane and across our planted fields in the middle of the night without permission. This is the public whose rights your proposal was secured. By the way, our property is 88 acres on the west side of the river, and it has been actively farmed. Who will be liable for any personal injury that occurs on this seized property? Who will pay the taxes on that portion of the deeded property that is no longer ours? How far does, quote, 'as well as lands beyond the thousand-foot width,' unquote, extend, and what subterfuge would be invoked to declare such lands necessary to preserve water conservation, scenic fish, wildlife historic, or outdoor recreation values? Is the Department of Natural Resources prepared to purchase my entire property for the price set by the Erie County Treasurer's Office tax appraisal? In 1943, I joined the United States Army, 506th Parachute Infantry Regiment, 101st Airborne Division. Picked up a rifle and a parachute and went into Europe to protect our country from the Nazi threat. I came home in 1946 with a Purple Heart with oak leaf cluster, a Silver Star medal, a good many scars, and a lifetime of physical problems." (applause). "Now, having spent that lifetime raising and providing for a family, having served in several public offices, including trustee Florence Township, Erie County, having invested 38 years and our entire financial resources in improving this property and paying taxes to maintain this community and state, we are told that we are to be plundered of as much of it as shall be necessary, et cetera. I have no delusions about how much, if any, of this letter will be read, and even less about any impact any of this will have upon the blind bludgeonings of bureaucracy, but be aware that I will commit my last dime to any effort, legal or otherwise, to block the adoption of this rapacious and misguided proposal." (applause). "I'd like to note here that I have had no response of any sort... Excuse me, of any sort, from the Department of Natural Resources, and I would also like to observe that in the 28 years that we have owned this property, including this recent disturbance, we have had no communication of any kind as affected property owners from the Department of Natural Resources. We have learned everything we have learned about what is going on by word of our neighbors and by the several groups that have organized to set up and organized opposition." One more letter, and I'm done. "I wrote to Thomas J. Paul, who, as you may know, is Erie County Auditor. Dear Mr. Paul, you are no doubt aware of the current proposal by Sean Lee Logan, Director of Ohio Department of Natural Resources, to designate portions of the Vermillion River and this adjoining property, private property, owned as a scenic river area. The proposal as made public would impact land owned by my wife and me in Florence Township, Erie County, since 1972. Enclosed is a copy of the letter which I've sent to Logan opposing his proposal. Several questions relating to changes that this proposal, if approved, would have on our ownership conditions are, I believe, better addressed by your office than by Logan's. Please let me have your comments. What will be the impact upon our assessed taxable evaluation of this proposal? Yet, the proposal has already had a further depressing impact upon market evaluation of our property, in that one of the parties recently expressing interest in purchasing the property has indicated that they would not be interested in pursuing the offer if this proposal is passed. It's impossible to predict what effect passage of this proposal might have on market value of the plundered properties. However, common sense and historical precedent make it easy to guess. Will your appraisal for tax purposes reflect this, excuse me, this market appraisal? As your records will show, this property's been used actively and exclusively for agricultural purposes by me and more recently by Johansson Farms Incorporated as tenants. I'm told that there would be no interest in cropping land that was opened to public access. A large portion of the funds that go to payment of our property taxes would be lost if this land were left idle. I realize that much if not most of any politically motivated scheme does not take into account or consideration the realities or even the truth of its representations. But taxes are real, and I will appreciate your candid appraisal of the potential impact on our tax obligations should this proposal be jammed down our throats. Thank you for your consideration." And to his credit, and I want to make sure I make a point of this, Thomas Paul responded in four days, and he says, "Dear Mr. Emery, I most definitely am aware of the Ohio Department of Natural Resources and the consideration to designate the Vermillion River as a scenic river. The Sandusky Register and the Vermillion Photo Journal both ran articles regarding the situation, and I have read both accounts. At this time, I will tell you that the State of Ohio is a, quote, 'market state,' unquote, and therefore, the Ohio Department of Taxation instructs me to appraise and value property based on what the market dictates, and also for the highest and best use of that property. In other words, what property is being sold for will determine the value that it is assessed for taxes, along with best use of the property. I cannot deal with speculation and can only do what the Ohio Revised Code instructs me to do. I will let you know that the deed to your property indicates what and where the property that you own is located in Erie County, and that this auditor's office... And that... And in this auditor's office, the deed rules, and we make no changes to your property in relation to those facts unless the deed is changed. If the designation as a scenic river is applied to the Vermillion River, we would have to look at the decision then and determine what course of action to take and to determine the market value. In any case, you could always file a board of revision complaint against value, once the value is established, to prevent your case and your evidence on what you feel the market value should be. If you have any further questions, et cetera." I just wanted to bring that in because that's a factual statement of what would happen to your property taxes... Excuse me. As lo... I'm having trouble here. As long as your name was still on the deed of record. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Emery. Okay? Go ahead, sir.
Noel Sailor, 12405 West Road, Wakeman. Also property owner there on the west side of the river. I see this as being not just a Lorraine County issue, but as an Erie County issue, here-on County issue, and possibly beyond. I actually got involved in this on the 22nd day of March. Didn't know a thing about it till about noon, when I got a phone call, and that's been one of my concerns, is they weren't able to get a hold of the people. But, um... Yeah, they didn't want to get a hold of us. I'll try to keep this short. As I pointed out at that meeting, I wasn't really sure, but I took a gamble and said I wanted to see a show of hands, how many people were in support or opposed to this. And much to my surprise, it was two-thirds to one-third. At the Vermillion meeting last week, I also mentioned to the people at ODNR that the group that is following him is getting bigger, and it's not in support of, it's in opposition. I was here last week at your meeting, didn't speak because of this since the time. I see the group here has also grown, and I'm sure it's not in support of, but it's in opposition. Up on the board in the Vermillion courthouse where we met last week, there was a saying that I kind of jotted down here, and I thought of as a small group there at Mill Hollow. It says, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it is the only thing that ever has." So... (applause). I also would just urge you to go on record not supporting this designation. As I can see, the group here, that would be their voice.
I live at 424 Overlook Road, Vermillion, Ohio. I presently don't have any land along the Vermillion River watershed, nor does my wife, Barbara. I'm here in regards, as a citizen, in this community of Vermillion, in regards to the neighbors, also citizens, that own land along the Vermillion River watershed. And you, the Lorraine Commissioners, privileged servants of the people, understood and know the river landowners and the watershed landowners have done a great service to the Vermillion River in protecting it by the cleanliness, the beauty, everything that I can see. They have chosen to do this on their behalf, and they'll continue because they treasure the river. Now whether ODNR has the same idealistic viewpoints, it's great, but at what cost to the landowners, to the property, private rights of the landowners? The citizens of this state, as well as visitors of other states, can use this body of water, whether it's been considered or designated as a scenic river or not. The laws that are in the ORC do restrict, impose, the use of this Vermillion River, regardless of what you, the ODNR officials, say now. What are your rules? Do you obey your rules? Or do your political subdivisions obey the rules? And what rules do you follow or break at the expense of landowners? Admit to the facts in the ORC 1547.81 law. It really is saying that you have the abilities to later on to choose to take the real property, to acquire it, or any estate, right or interest therein, and et cetera. Your laws continue to change, always in order to suit your needs, not the needs of the landowners. The ODNR and the State of Ohio will make others' attempts in the future to claim this river. There is no communication breakdown. What you've done is wrong. This process will be done at the expense, at a loss to the private property's landowners' rights, not your so-called responsibilities, privileges, et cetera. You, the electric officials, have a responsibility to the will of the people, this being the right, justifiable thing to do. Rescind the entire study, the resolution. If you leave a thorn in your finger, a wound will eventually will, eventually become infected. It itches, it becomes red, it's soreness. What do you do to stop it? You pull it out. Stop the process now. It will haunt you later, us, the landowners. Landowners, continue the battle, because the state will never stop, nor ODNR. This is not to be considered as the public trust doctrine. Private property is only, and still only, private property by the present owners of those acres. And a special note, Dennis Murray, thank you for your comments, but not desired. Are you really committed to helping the neighbors of the watershed landowners? They've spoken against this scenic designation process. Suspend for one year, two, three? How long? No, stop this process now. We say again, not now, not ever. (applause). Thank you.
My family's farm right in here. You can see that the river comes out and cradles this. This won't be easy. These are the thoughts of a farmer, farm wife, who's lived on the property since the '50s. My dad was the fourth generation, I'm the fifth, and I have some daughters that can't sleep, who are the sixth. This is hard because they feel like a family. Family died, family member. If you are very lucky, someone will interrupt you on an October afternoon in the midst of raging, roaring, rolling torrent that is a harvest, saying, "Let's go to the woods." You will think of the 300 things you were going to do that's left of that day and say, "Splendid idea." A cover crop of rye blesses a vegetable farm with spectacular green in early October. A line in a favorite poem, "Green, green is a god color," seems to fit it. "Across this god-colored field we go, my companions, my dogs, and I. Then into a meadow gone to weeds. It's a smoky haze of a weed that a farmer's wife can only appreciate in a mood of abandon. I reach down and spread my hand over the whisper of it. Woods' companions must be chosen with care. It is expected that when you pause and look up in wonder at long filtering... Long light filtering through feathery pine needles, they will not stumble over you, but join you in awe that no one will spoil the miracle of speaking of it. They should know intuitively that you revere this section of woods and share it with them because they are special. We share a leaf of sassafras, pulled off and crumpled and held to the nose for its discovery of lemon. The smell invokes the chill of March, the digging of root, and the brewing of pink tea in warm farm kitchens. It plants the temptation to return in two weeks when this will be a burning bush." It plants the temptation to return in two weeks when this will be a burning bush. Stepping over small obstacles, we make our way through underbrush to the river bluff, to a point that falls away gradually to the water. Far below, the river is a placid creek with no more motion than if it were a canvas by Rousseau. A yellow leaf that travels its surface is the only indication that moves at all. The trees on the opposite side of the valley take on the hues of autumn. Here on the sloping surface where we stand in the memory gift, I will give these friends to carry from this afternoon, an oak sanctuary carpeted in great masses of moss, newly green with the reviving rains of fall. Here one must kneel and spread hands lovingly on the soft green. One friend inclines her head to inspect the star-shaped moss plants, and there is more of prayer in the posture than in all the liturgies of formal religion. Picking up a sprouted acorn, I have a quick vision of the great tree whose miraculous beginnings lies here in my palm. A sad awareness that I will not live long enough to see this tree grown. One cannot absorb enough of this place and must go away still longing after the loveliness. The descent to the valley, the smooth fallen logs, the shamrocks growing in shale, the hemlock beneath it, a waterfall, the shadows on the hill, the shadows on the still water, nothing satisfies that longing. It is into that vacuum in the hours of days ahead that the joy of this day will slowly seep. Does this sound like someone who is ready to go out and pollute that river? Do we need to protect it when we have souls like this watching it? I would, I would encourage you to do it today, reject the resolution. I don't think anybody needs to wait a year to see that kind of passion. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord.
Um, I would just like to say, um, you know, we don't know a lot of the people in this room, um, but there are a lot of people here, and how can so many people be wrong about something? We do know John Hatcher and Nico Logley that did sign the petition, and I'm sure if we looked through those petitions, we would recognize other names as well. We also know and respect Dan Martin, who I've always thought, has done a, a great job with the Metro Parks, and I would just urge you, he even said he did not think that ODNR is doing the right thing here. I would suggest and recommend that we make, that I'm, am going to make a motion to rescind Not, not part of it like we did last week, but the entire, entire resolution, and, and if ODNR, you know, goes back to the drawing board and revises, you know, the whole, the whole concept and sells it to the people on the river, then we can take a look at it in the future. But right now, I believe that we should just stop it in its entirety today, and I make a motion to do so.
Commissioner?
No, no, I'm actually going to second the vote. No.
We can't hear you.
I'm sorry, you can't hear me now?
No, we can't.
I'm actually going to second it, but I'm going to vote no, but under my comments. I will be at the meeting tonight. I told you I was still getting information. I've talked to Representative Booth, we're still getting questions, and I will still stand to, we're withholding any support for it currently, like our, our resolution as of last week. But, and I don't know where Commissioner Blair is going, but I will second it so it doesn't die. But I want to give my comments.
So it's up to Betty, is the determining factor. Betty, you have all the power, come on, girlfriend.
Well, I'm, I'm not going to second the motion because, for a variety of reasons. I heard the things that you said today, but I also heard some of the things you didn't say. I heard comments that were made from ODNR in an attempt to answer what I thought were some of the questions that some of you asked last week, but you didn't hear what they said because you asked the same questions again. So I hear, I hear here a significant lack of communication. And in Dennis Murray's letter to the editor, "If you want to talk, go ahead, I'll sit here all day, but I've listened to you, and I respectfully request that you listen to me." Dennis Murray starts out, and he said, "Unfortunately, the state did not roll out the program here without stumbling and missteps, which has led to much, if not most, of the concerns expressed." Statement. When I talked to Dan Martin about this, he, he said pretty much the same thing. I think the two gentlemen here kind of said the same thing. So I'm saying to you that I think there's a lack of communication, and I think when there's a lack of communication, both sides need to talk to each other. And I hope that that was what we might provide today, was a format for the two parties to get together a little better than what had happened last week.
Who's the second party, though?
The two parties, Ohio Department of Natural Resources, the public.
Yeah, but the public doesn't have, uh, like a representative unless they take out of their pocket to pay for legal counsel.
They don't need legal counsel. They had about 30 spokespeople here today and last week.
We are communicating. We're telling you we don't want it.
That's right. I have a motion to second on the floor. There are further discussions.
Sir, you can't speak. We have a motion on the floor, sir. Sir.
Well, we need to, we're going to the motion until we talk. We need to be here if it's four o'clock, we need to be here.
I had a few more comments I would like to make, and, um, I'm going to say that I think that there was a reduction of the suggested length of the scenic river, and on my humble opinion, and that's exactly what it is, my humble opinion, the scenic river should coincide with the, um, the property that belongs to Metro Parks. I think that would fit the public use of Metro Parks, it would, uh, uh, fit their purpose. Dan Martin commented that, um, the designation would be a great marketing, marketing tool for Metro Parks. He would love to see it designated, it would, uh, would take some more input, and you would get that if you can continue with your public meetings and discussion, and he thought it would protect the valley. I think that that would be a, a good compromise. And, um, I live on the banks of the Black River, which is nothing like the Vermillion River because it's very dirty. I walk that Black River. My family has owned property on the Black River for over 100 years, so I heard you tell about how your family has owned the Black River. And I am not, I'm not unhearing when you tell these things, but I have a comparison to make. I've been a member of the Black River RAP for the 20 years that I've been a commissioner here. I have seen improvements in the Black River. I'm envious of what your Vermillion River looks like, but I think that there's a public purpose to be gained here as long as you do not lose your rights. And so my suggestion is to go back to the drawing board, make the scenic river match Metro Parks, make a public purpose for the public, because I think the public, all the public, not just the landowners here, have some rights too.
We are the, we are the.
Did you hear what I said? Listen, please listen. I think the public, not just the, the, the landowners here, have some rights in this as well, and I think everybody's, uh, objectives could be gained, and that's my comment. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Moskowski.
Yes.
Mr. Calo.
No.
Ms. Blair.
No. That concludes our meeting here. We have some.
No.
Please, I'm going to chair this meeting. That concludes this part of the meeting. We have some other business to attend to. If you want to stay, you're more than welcome to.
David, are you going to listen to the people or not?
I think we just did.
I hear what you're saying, I hear what you didn't say, and you're not listening to what they said, and you're not listening to what we said.
I believe that I did.
And you're not listening to the rules and laws of the ODNR. You're not going, you're not taking it all down. You're making your inform and just, an informal and just, uh, request, you're not listening to the people, the very people that put you in office for 20 years. Now, we need to reopen this today or tomorrow, but we're not happy with this at all.
I appreciate that. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Cordez, county administrator.
And we were also appreciating you listening to what we have to say.
I did, and we're going on to our.
I hear what you said, and I hear what you didn't say.
Uh, we're going on to our regular order of business now. If you'd like to stay, you're more than welcome. If you want to exit, that's fine. You have a report.
Thank you, Madam President.
Why don't we wait for a moment for the room to clear?
Uh, yeah, there is still public comment at the end of the meeting.
Excuse me? Oh, yeah. Tom, good to see you. Thank you. It's been a long time. Thank you for your time. Thank you. Yes, it has, 10 years. Thank you. Thank you.
You've got some work to do. You've got lots of work to do.
Anything else for us?
Tim, did you want that paper I gave you? Or you want to keep that?
I think Metro Park.
No, I can get another copy if you want it, that's fine. Yeah.
Good thing it wasn't serious.
You want to play for the disengaged?
Ron? Just make sure nothing goes on the highway.
Hey, knock him down, Ron.
Can we, can we be there yet?
You want to take a five minute?
No.
Here we go. Jimmy, one clock?
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you very much. Folks, would you clear the room, please? We have a meeting to go on.
Take your seats, please. Something.
Well, then, please sit down.
Good, you're welcome.
And let's get the meeting done. Any conversations, please take them outside. Thank you. Commissioners, with, uh, I only have one piece.
Don't you have a gavel, president?
No, I could use Ted's head.
Okay.
All right.
I'm, uh, I'm pleased to let you know this morning, Commissioners, that, uh, we had been working, um, on trying to have a summer youth program that we had last year. And while we were unsuccessful getting money from DOL, uh, we, we have been successful at getting TANF money to have another summer youth program. The only difference this year is that we'll have to, the qualifications will be a bit more significant than they were when we were operating under stimulus dollars. But it's going to be another exciting year for summer youth. We got about a million dollars to, uh, to spend on the program. We need to be ramped pretty quick, uh, going into, uh, late May, early June, uh, but, uh, I'm, I'm comfortable that we can get enough people on board, and we should be able to provide employment opportunity for over 300 youth again this summer. So that, that, that's good for us, and that, that, uh, program worked very, very well last year, and I'm hopeful that we can do it again. The only element that's missing that I'm, I'm unhappy about, and I wish it had been there, we're not allowed to use any of those dollars for soft skill trainings. Classroom time. Last, last year, we put them to work for 32 hours and then, uh, for eight hours, uh, well, about six of the eight, but we put them in a classroom, we did soft skills training, uh, to improve their outlook on either continuing education or how to maintain employment in the workplace, issues like that. These dollars can't be spent on that. So we're going to try to augment that with some of the different dollars that we may be able to get from the state so we can have some soft skills training, because it's one thing to give them work, it's another thing to work with them and, and job coach them and give them the soft skills so that they, uh, we can give them a lifetime worth of employment opportunity. But, uh, that's my only report this morning. I'll have more for you in the coming weeks. Uh, I'm just glad that we have this money this summer, and I'll, I'll bring you a program in, uh, probably by the end of May. Other than that, I just need to revise my request for executive session to include a potential hire in community development. I didn't state that earlier. So I want to discuss that with the board also.
Thank you.
Mr. Ennis, Assistant County Prosecutor?
Commissioners, as you will recall, uh, we're doing some, uh, construction work on the property that is currently being used by the Ohio State License Bureau, um, and we need to, uh, use the property that they are currently using to do their maneuverability tests. So we have, uh, reached an understanding with Spitzer Management to allow us to use the property across the street at, or at the corner of East Bridge and Broad Street, that's 101 East Broad Street, to allow, uh, the License Bureau to conduct their tests, uh, for a period of 60 days there. Um, no cost to the county other than there will be some, uh, painting of the striping, and when we're done, we have to repaint that. Um, so I would ask the Commissioners to approve, uh, a memorandum of understanding with the, uh, Spitzer Management in order to do that. It would start May 10th.
Jury, if you make a motion.
I, I'm, you go ahead.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Moskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Thank you. I have no other business, Commissioners.
Commissioners, your court.
Uh, well, first, happy Cinco de Mayo to every buddy. Um, I don't know if, um, all of you read the paper this morning, but our county recorder, Judy Nedwick, had a heart attack yesterday. Um, hopefully she's doing well, and I would hope that you would all keep her in your prayers so she will have a speedy recovery. Um, and speaking of prayers, uh, everyone knows last month, April 15th, we sent in our taxes, and I hope you did, um, but there's something else that occurred that day that kind of flew underneath the radar screen. Barbara Crabbe, who serves as the United States District Court Judge for the Western District of Wisconsin, ruled that the National Day of Prayer is unconstitutional. She stated that it violates the Establishment Clause. She ruled that the statute serves no secular purpose. I found that a group called the Freedom of Religion Foundation filed lawsuits against both the Bush and Obama administrations from, um, making the annual proclamation, which is customary to this event, which would be tomorrow. The National Day of Prayer has been held on the first Thursday in May and has been practiced since 1952. This tradition dates back to the year 1775, but with a stroke of a pen, she just wiped out a 58-year observance of our freedom to gather and pray. This is an attack on our religious freedom. I thought the separation of church and state was designed as to not form a national religion like Great Britain. It also prevents the United States from financially supporting it. The National Day of Prayer is non-denominational, calls for all religions to come together for one day to pray for the health of our country. The government doesn't finance this event, and the last time I checked, it doesn't cost any money to pray. This county, this country was founded on biblical values, and I'm tired of these groups who, quite frankly, I feel don't stand for what the majority of the people of this country believe in, they keep getting their way because they're loud, and they file lawsuits and pay for attorneys to fight their cause. I'm tired of these groups that want to take "In God We Trust" off of our currency. I'm tired of them saying that we need to take the word "God" out of our pledge of allegiance. I'm tired of them saying that we can't have a moment of silence before a baseball game. I'm tired of them wanting to take down the crosses at Arlington Cemetery for our servicemen and women who lost their lives in combat for this great country. And so far, we haven't lost those battles, but I fear it's a matter of time if we let this decision stand. Her order does not block any prayer until after the appeals in the case are exhausted, but what happens then? It concerns me that these same groups of people were offended by having the Ten Commandments posted in our schools, and they won that battle. Has the school system or the kids done any better since that time? Come on, Americans, we can no longer sit back and let the minority of people speak for the majority on these issues. This isn't just a religious issue, this is a slap in the face to every American citizen. Judge Crabbe's decision can only affect you if you let it. I urge each and every one of you to pray tomorrow for your great country, for our state, for our county, for your city or village or township, for your neighborhood and your family. Pray that this decision will be overturned in the Chicago-based Seventh Court Circuit of Appeals. They keep getting their way because they're loud, and they file lawsuits and pay for attorneys to fight their cause. I'm tired of these groups that want to take "In God We Trust" off of our currency. I'm tired of them saying that we need to take the word "God" out of our pledge of allegiance. I'm tired of them saying that we can't have a moment of silence before a baseball game. I'm tired of them wanting to take down the crosses at Arlington Cemetery for our servicemen and women who lost their lives in combat for this great country. And so far, we haven't lost those battles, but I fear it's a matter of time if we let this decision stand. Her order does not block any prayer until after the appeals in the case are exhausted, but what happens then? It concerns me that these same groups of people were offended by having the Ten Commandments posted in our schools, and they won that battle. Has the school system or the kids done any better since that time? Come on, Americans, we can no longer sit back and let the minority of people speak for the majority on these issues. This isn't just a religious issue. This is a slap in the face to every American citizen. Judge Crabbe's decision can only affect you if you let it. I urge each and every one of you to pray tomorrow for your great country, for our state, for our county, for your city or village or township, for your neighborhood and your family. Pray that this decision will be overturned in the Chicago-based Seventh Court Circuit of Appeals. And each and every person, whether you're religious or not, should call the White House and let your voice be heard. And the number to do that is area code two zero two four five six one 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 one. And you can call them between Monday through Friday from nine to five, and I urge you to do so. And thank you very much. God bless America. Thank you. I'm so, I can't believe this has not even been in the paper. Have you, have you seen it?
Yeah, I've seen a couple of issues out of it.
I haven't. It rates me, obviously. Go ahead.
I read a ton all the time.
Yes, you do.
I should all that government stuff. I'd like to thank everyone for coming today. Again, maybe not a popular decision, but I'm still garnering more information on whether we're going to rescind totally or not. I hope you folks who are part of that respect that. Also, congratulations actually to the mental health levy passed yesterday. Fine job, Mr. Neff and his staff, and congratulations to everyone who participated, and especially to the winners. And good luck till November. End of my report.
And I'd like to thank all those who gave the voters a choice, even though they might not have been the winners.
Would correspondents move their reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun.
Aye.
Moskowski.
Aye.
Public comment?
Is there anyone here?
Nancy.
Good morning, Nancy.
Nancy, you've been patient.
Nancy Funnai, good morning. Soil and Water.
Good morning. I'm Nancy Funnai, administrator with Soil and Water. And I'm a little late because I'm still learning how to print these reports, but I have your quarterly report at your request for phase two. May I approach and give you a copy?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
Nancy, if she sees some trees, just email it.
Oh, she wants to come and see us. She likes us. Thanks, Nancy. Any comments you want to make on it?
We are learning every day, and I have to thank Dan Bogaveski from Ohio EPA for the constant training and the assistance that he had, that he gives me doing these inspections and for phase two. There's only a few townships that we haven't worked with, but hopefully, down the road, construction will pick up and the economy will pick up, and we'll do so. We have done seven lot splits, eight new constructions, three violations which have been corrected. Currently working on three subdivisions, and one school was approved as well. So it's a long process. It's keeping me very busy, and I appreciate the opportunity to administrate this program on behalf of commissioners.
Thank you so much, Nancy.
I have a question to run off of.
Please, thank you.
We have recently had a couple of major findings on local companies in regards to NPDS and incorporated areas. I don't know if we have in unincorporated, but does any of that fine money come back to help us with our program, or has that been looked into?
I wasn't aware of that happening, actually.
There was a large one with Kavani I saw in the paper. I mean, it was over thirty or forty states that they were fined for some of the violations.
I can find out and ask.
I didn't know if there was another revenue stream. If we got some of that money back, so I know when there's EPA findings, they put it to another project, correct, Mr. Cortez? They can. That's what happened with our EPA fine on the wastewater treatment plants. They, they, they put it into doing some local projects that we could apply for. That's what I was asking. I didn't know if any of that fine money came back locally to fund projects.
No, I don't know about the finding at all. I'm sorry. I can't answer your question.
It was in the paper last week.
I don't get the paper here, sorry.
Yeah, if you remember, the stuff from our waste treatment plants was used on the Black River. Correct. I mean, that's why I was bringing it up, because it was just last week. I don't know how much it was for this area, how much violation was, but as a corporation, they were fined, I believe, a million dollars across the country. And I didn't know if any of those dollars, like the EPA's done in the past, would come back to help with local projects and funding.
It would be nice if they did.
Specifically for Soil and Water.
Yeah, how about that? We can only hope. Do you have any other questions, please?
Can you follow up on that?
Yes, I will.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. Anyone else?
Linda Taylor, twelve eighty-one Vermillion Road. We have Marina on the Vermillion River, River View. I heard your comments and whatever, and our river is clean, Betty. Maybe ODNR can take some of that money and clean up your dirty river.
I heard that suggestion.
I'm sure you are, I'm sure you're a very good steward of the river, but we've also been really good stewards. So maybe they can give you some money to clean up that river.
I should ask them, huh?
And, yeah, I think you probably will get some now. Also, the dredging issue, okay, ODNR has says, okay, you're going to dredge if you're not a scenic river. However, we have to go to the Army Corps of Engineers to get our dredging permit. What if that tentacle of the government decides to say, well, we're just not going to give you your permit this year? I would love it if the Army Corps of Engineers would just give Vermillion a blanket permit to dredge because my family has been dredging that river for fifty years, the same little strip every year, and we have to get a permit for that. I've saved, my family has saved Vermillion and the other marinas down or towards the mouth of the river millions, not millions, hundreds of thousands of dollars of dredging that the shale doesn't go carried down to the rest of the part of the river for the other marinas to dredge out. Vermillion did get that grant last year to dredge the river, while, lo and behold, all that shale is back. I would love the Ohio to just put where Route Two is some sort of a floodgate or something that would just regulate the river, because the reason we have shale down there is because the flow of the river can go so fast. If you just slow down the river a little bit, the fish will still jump, the salmon will still get wherever they need to go, but that would solve all of Vermillion's problems. Yes, the land behind it, the Metro Parks would get flooded occasionally, but we get flooded anyway. The animals will just go wherever they need to go, but every year we get flooded. And as far as the ice breaking, we need to break the ice because the houses in Vermillion will just flood. It'll just back up. So that's all I have to say. And I did hear both sides. I am listening, but I still think you should have rescinded this and actually put it to bed and not even have another discussion of this river being scenic. That's my position. Thank you.
Can I respond? Ms. Taylor, because actually, you resonated last week talking about the water break.
Yes, I was pretty nervous.
I agree with your decision. Very good job. But we do have four public hearings yet, so to make that decision to rescind when there's still public comment and discussion...
I understand.
I don't think that's proper. I'm sorry. Not that I don't agree with Commissioner Moskowski that probably in the best intents and purposes for immediacy, we should rescind.
Right.
But I think we should go through the public hearing. That's why we have that process, and I'd like to learn more information because I haven't been a part of it.
Totally understand.
Not that I'm disagreeing.
It's just being a business owner on this scenic lake, I mean, it'll put us out of business. I mean, the birds will be quite happy walking on the river.
I understand. Bad decisions by government hurting business. Very much so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Anyone else? I move you go into executive session for the purposes outlined by the administrator and the assistant county prosecutor.
Second. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Moskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.